Great, good evening everyone and welcome to the Thursday, October 21st, 2021, 6:00 PM, starting time.
Sorry, you got unmuted.
This one unmuted. Okay, so I'll start again. Again, like I said, I'm getting used to all this, so I apologize. So, good evening everyone and welcome to the Thursday, October 21st, 2021, 6 o'clock PM, start time of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Robert Tatro, I am the Chair, and before I begin this evening, I have to read a couple of pre-printed scripts as far as our conduct with the hybrid meeting and COVID rules. So, again, my name is Robert Tatro, I'm the Chair of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals, and in an effort to reduce background noise, I'm going to ask that you all please mute your phones at this time, and only unmute if you're going to speak. Permit me to confirm, and that is referring to the folks that are remotely calling in. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipating on the agenda are present and can hear me, and I know that these gentlemen can, but I'm going to do it anyway. Mr. Maron, present?
Present.
Ms. Chacolo, present?
Present.
Mr. Cussy, present?
Present.
Ms. Roach, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Bob, I'm here.
Thank you very much. We also received an email that Mr. Jones was out of a meeting. He may attend this evening, but we told him that we had a quorum, so he actually might also opt out, but he is an alternate member, so it will not affect the decisions of the Board this evening. Ms. Bush, are you here?
I'm here.
Excellent, thank you so much. So, we have one alternate present, in the event somebody has to bow out because of a conflict of interest, we can move Ms. Bush forward, otherwise, we will begin the meeting. So I'm going to go ahead and mute this for a second, and if there's any other comments from them, I will return them to a speaking status, so we are muted on that.
You're going to keep that on.
It has to stay on, okay.
Otherwise, they won't hear you.
I wasn't, oh, I realized that, okay, I wasn't trying to leave them out. Okay, so, with that, I would like to say that we are going to open the hearing. So, for COVID rules, if anybody, if you're not comfortable where you are right now, I see that some of you are wearing a mask, that's great. If you need to social distance, please figure out how to space yourselves. It's not required in town, we don't have a mandatory mask right now. I'm going to try to keep my mask off as long as I can, and just for the record, I am vaccinated, I know it doesn't, it's not required of me to tell, but I am projecting my voice, so I just think that's important for everyone to know and understand, my fellow colleagues and yourselves as well. So, with that being said, we have a 6 o'clock PM hearing, application, and I apologize if I say this wrong, FASA Management Incorporated requesting a special permit under Section 3.2.2.2 and 4.3.5.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaw to build 12 townhouses on property located at 262 Central Street, Auburn, Mass., map 56, parcel 82. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So, we have to do a roll call vote with each and every vote, so just so you're aware also, so I'm going to begin with that. So, to open, Mr. Maron, how do you vote, sir?
I approve.
Ms. Chacolo, how do you vote, sir?
Approve.
Mr. Cussy, how do you vote, sir?
Approve.
Ms. Roach, how do you vote, ma'am?
I approve.
Thank you, and Ms. Bush, how do you vote?
I approve.
And myself, I also approve to open, so the hearing is now open. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant for the 6 o'clock PM hearing present? Okay, so I have made a first and second call, I do not see the applicant introducing themselves in the meeting here, right now. Are we aware of them being late at all? Is the applicant calling in from a remote? Yes?
Yeah. 6:00 PM versus 7:00?
I would assume they've gotten all the same information that we get, so I would say so.
If all the Butters got their notices, then they got their notice and it all said 6 o'clock.
Right, so I just want to be clear, before we move forward here, we're going to make sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's, that we're going to verify that the applicant is in fact attending or not, if they are in the remote sort of grandstands, if you will, or if they're late, so we don't want to make a mistake on this.
Mr. Chairman, if I may make a suggestion, please. So, if the applicant doesn't arrive or make themselves known within the next 30 seconds or so, might I suggest that we reserve their time and move up the other applicants, in courtesy that he's having some technical difficulties, he or she, give him a chance, especially with the folks at the church. I'd hate to bump him and have him have to go to a next meeting if he was able to show up late.
I agree, so let's, I think we should probably do that as a formal vote.
So, I would, I would make that, that motion, Mr. Chairman, that we would close this, well, point of order.
Just continue it.
We could, we could.
Stay open and just vote to continue.
Very good, so I would, I would make the motion that we continue this hearing until such time this evening as the applicant appears, and we can make a determination at the end of the meeting.
Excellent.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, hold on one second. So, what we have here is a motion on the floor by a member of the Board that we would continue the hearing for the purpose of allowing the applicant to attend, or it maybe continues to the next meeting, that's up to be decided. So, I have to take a full vote of the Board before we decide how that works. So, we have a motion on the floor from Vice Chair Maron, we have a second from Mr. Chacolo, so I require to put it to a vote. So, with that being said, Mr. Maron, how do you vote, sir?
I approve.
Ms. Chacolo, how do you vote, sir?
Approve.
Mr. Cussy, how do you vote, sir?
Approve.
Uh, Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
I approve.
And I also approve. So, what we're going to do is, if that person shows up, you can all wait, please feel free to still attend the meeting. If the applicant shows up, we're going to finish the other hearings that we have, and then we'll go back to that one. If they don't, we will make a decision on whether or not it's continued to the next meeting. So, with that being said, we have not continued the meeting yet, we are going to, the hearing is still open, we've agreed to suspend it. What I need for you all to do, if you are interested in speaking on this matter, if you could sign in on it, do you have a sign-in sheet?
Yeah, there is, signed in.
Okay, so you're already signed in. So now, if I have any questions, what you need to do is come up here and sit by the blue lights on this side, because the members that are participating at home have to be able to hear you, and we have to be able to record your voice. So if anybody has any questions or concerns of the Board, if you come up and sit in one of those two chairs and kind of address yourself to that.
Through the Chair, if I may.
Yes, please.
It wouldn't be appropriate to take comments on the application prior to the applicant being present. Just a point of clarification for the people in the, in the audience, we have two hearings, aside from the hearing you're all here for, that should go fairly quickly, so we're not talking about delaying this by hours, we're talking about a few minutes. If the applicant's not here after the other two hearings, then it'll get continued to the next hearing. So, we're not talking about making you sit here for hours, it's just two quick hearings.
And thank you for clarifying that, and I apologize, I should have been better explaining that. So we have a couple of sign-location requests after this hearing, and again, he might show up in the next 10 to 15 minutes, we'll get through these two applicants, and we can go right back to the agenda. So that's certainly possible. So with that being said, we're going to keep the hearing open, it will be technically continued, but we're going to move on to the 605. So, the 605 PM hearing, applicant Serrato signs LLC requesting a special permit under Section 7.8 of the Auburn zoning bylaw to erect a 36 by 72 directional sign under Section 7.6.4 on property located at 22 Milbury Street, Auburn, Mass., map 41, parcel 106. Is the applicant present?
Uh, yes, I am. This is Andy Serrato, Serrato signs.
Yes, sir, good evening, Mr. Serrato. Who would be speaking tonight, the applicant or yourself, sir?
Um, I'm the applicant, so I will be speaking.
Okay, excellent. Um, I'm, do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so again, roll call vote. Mr. Maron?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Mr. Cussy?
Approve.
Ms. Roach?
I approve.
And I approve, so the hearing for the 605 is open. So, Mr. Serrato, sir, I yield the floor to you, if you want to give the Board a description of what's going on, and explain what you're trying to accomplish this evening. Go ahead.
Hey, um, this, this application and the next one is fifteen, so very little bit, I apologize. When I first started the project, I understood it to be one property, and then when I applied for the special permit, it probably was two properties, uh, 122 and 124. And it's currently, um, it's owned by Worcester Envelope, and part of the property is now being leased by Polar Beverages. Um, so what they were hoping to do was eliminate the two directional signs that they have up there now, and install a new directional sign basically at each entranceway. And on the top portion of each sign, if we start with 22, would be the Worcester Envelope, and then the bottom portion would be Apocetus Polar Beverage, having an arrow going straight ahead to go to the next entranceway. Um, your original directional sign is only allowed to be two square feet on each property right now, they do not have any ground signs. Um, I was hoping to have a sign taking place of a ground sign, but since it was given directions, it was told to me by the inspector that it had to be treated as a directional sign.
Okay, is that the end of your presentation, sir?
Yes.
Okay, so are there any, and this is just referencing this particular hearing, are there any Butters present that may be concerned and want to speak on behalf of their interests in the 605 sign hearing? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, I'm going to pass it over to the members one at a time. Mr. Maron, to you, sir, do you have any questions or concerns of the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and so to the applicant, thank you for being here this evening. So what would the total square footage of what you're proposing be?
It's three foot by six foot, so the total would be eighteen square feet.
Um, and that's, did you say two locations? So one entrance, one exit?
No, basically, and I'm sorry, maybe I get ahead of myself, let's just treat this as 22. So there'll only be one sign at that entranceway of 22. On the top portion of the sign, we'll say Worcester Envelope, and have below it, it says business with an hour to the right. On the bottom section of that sign, it's going to have something for Polar Beverages, it says shipping and receiving, to direct them to the next property. The building's deceiving, it's two properties, it's all the same color, it's been Worcester Envelope for a long period of time, so we're just trying to get trucks to be going into the, to the right property and not be driving into the wrong building, onto the wrong building, I'm sorry.
No, don't be sorry, I appreciate your comments, and it gives me a, a, a good understanding of the view and what you're trying to accomplish. I'm going to reserve, Mr. Chairman, I don't have additional questions at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chacolo, sir?
I will also reserve, I have no questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Cussy, sir?
Yeah, I have one question, how tall are these signs?
Six, uh, ten feet to the top. It'll be six feet of height of sign and three feet, three feet below the sign. The sign will have to be set back, from my understanding, ten feet from the street line for your ordinance.
Very good, I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Roach, do you have any questions, ma'am?
I do not, my counterparts have both asked the two questions I had, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, Caleb, are there any concerns that you may have that you may need to address to the Board?
Through the Chair, I do not have any concerns, as the applicant stated, there is no ground sign on this property, but unfortunately, because these direct traffic, they're considered directional.
Mm-hmm, okay, and I have no questions, my colleagues have already addressed the things that we generally have concern with types of projects like this, so I'll just make sure that we have one reserved. Mr. Maron, anything else?
Not a question, Mr. Chairman, but just a, well, actually, I believe for fellow members, just a confirmation. Um, so we're, if, if we were to vote grant, we're, we're granting relief based on size here, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and I don't think there's any other consideration that they need relief for?
No, there isn't.
Okay, all right, thank you.
They'll meet all the other required setbacks, um, if you have any issues with lighting or anything like that, and hours of operation, if they are lighted, that's the time to address it, but otherwise, it really is just size.
Just the size, so thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate.
And quite honestly, I think this is one of those cases where, um, it's probably going to be safer to have a larger sign with it, because we don't have control over the trucks entering and leaving, that's not our, our governing situation here. What we can do is create the size of the sign, and I think it might actually help the flow of traffic rather than impede it.
As always, thanks for your thoughtful comments and giving me a chance to flush that out.
Absolutely.
I don't have any other questions.
Do I have a, uh, Mr. Serrato, sir, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I'll just, though, the one comment that was brought up to signs and not illuminated, and not illuminated.
Excellent, that's, I appreciate that, thank you very much. Okay, so, um, and I just want to be clear, you started at the beginning of the hearing, and you had mentioned that you had thought it was going to be the need for one at 22 and 24, is that correct?
Um, and I, I'm sorry, I get ahead of myself sometimes.
That's okay.
There is, there is a need for both, I brought it up at the beginning, because I'm, I'm hoping when this passes, it's going to be all the same information for the next property, so I just don't know if you want to go through it all again, so.
So we actually have to, because of the application, the way it was presented to the town, um, but I mean, if, if the Board sees fit to approve of this particular sign, I imagine the other one would probably go as planned as well, uh, and would be relatively quick. So with that being said, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public portion of the hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Um, so for the purpose of closing the public portion of the hearing, Mr. Maron, how do you vote, sir?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Mr. Cussy?
Approve.
Um, Ms. Roach?
I approve.
Thank you, and I also approve, so the public portion of the hearing is closed. Do I have a motion on the 605 PM applicant Serrato signs to erect a 36 by 72 directional sign under 7.6.4 at the property located at 22 Milbury Street, map 41, parcel 106?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve with standard conditions as stated.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Uh, again, roll call vote. Um, Mr. Maron, how do you vote, sir?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Uh, Mr. Cussy?
Approve.
Ms. Roach?
I approve.
And I vote to approve. So the 605 PM applicant of the sign placement at 22 Milbury Street is complete, thank you very much. Uh, Mrs. Serrato, you're still with us, so I'm going to go ahead and move on to the 610 PM applicant. Again, Serrato signs LLC requesting a special permit under 7.8 of the Auburn zoning bylaw to erect a 36 by 72 directional sign under 7.6.4 on property located at 24 Milbury Street, map 41, parcel 108. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
And I'll second.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Maron?
I approve.
Ms. Chacolo?
Approve.
Mr. Roach? Uh, Mr. Cussy?
I approve.
Ms. Roach?
I approve.
And I approve. So, Mrs. Serrato, sir, considering this is the really part two of this, um, do you have anything you'd like to discuss or add, uh, that is anything different from the first presentation?
Um, the only difference is, is that polar will be on the top and the Worcester envelope will be on the bottom, but everything I stated before will be exactly the same.
Okay, so they're just reversing them for the purpose, when somebody pulls in or out, they'll understand which parking lot they're going into?
Yes, sir.
Great, okay, thank you very much. Um, anybody have any questions, Mr. Maron?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, just for clarification on the record, so the, other than the orientation of the names on the sign, there's no material change between the size of the first sign that we discussed and the size of this sign, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so if you, the sign will be 36 inches wide, 72 inches tall, 10 feet overall height, uh, will be 10 foot setback from the street, uh, of the town bylaw.
Okay, so both signs, identical layout and, and orientation. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any additional questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chacolo, sir?
No questions.
Mr. Cussy, sir?
No questions.
Ms. Roach?
No questions.
And I again also have no questions. So, Mrs. Serrato, do you have anything else you'd like to add, sir?
Oh, that's all.
Excellent, thank you. Do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
I'll make a motion to clo-.
Oh, I apologize. Uh, very quickly, I know the answer to this already, but just because of the rules of order, do we have any Butters present that would like to comment on this particular hearing? Hearing none, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to close the portion of the public hearing, second.
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Maron, how do you vote for closing?
I approve.
Thank you, Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Mr. Cussy?
Approve.
Ms. Roach?
I approve.
And I vote to approve, the public portion of the hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion on the 6:00 PM application for the special permit to erect this sign under 7.8 of the Auburn zoning bylaw of a sign that is 36 by 72 by 10 feet? It is a directional sign under 7.6.4 on property located at 24 Milbury Street, Auburn, Mass., map 41, parcel 108.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve as stated with standard conditions.
Thank you very much, do I have a second? Mr. Chacolo, second, thank you. Mr. Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Cussy, how do you vote?
Approve.
Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
I approve.
And I vote to approve. The applications for the 605 and the 610 have passed. Um, Mr. Serrato, as always, sir, thank you for your professionalism, we appreciate your presentations here at the Board. If you have any questions or concerns, or when you need your permits, you can go ahead and call Caleb at the Town Hall, I'm sure you've done that before as well, and they'll be issuing all the necessary paperwork.
I do have one question, and if I'm out of order on this, I apologize.
That's okay.
Is Caleb, is Caleb involved with this meeting?
He is present, sir, yes.
Okay, so here's my question, because in another town, they did this for me, with the bad, with winter coming and safety concerns that these people have for their property, several municipalities will issue a permit subject to a letter coming from the owner stating that there if, if there is an appeal, and they won't take the sign down. That's what they're telling me, no.
So I think what he's certain, you understood that one?
Have him call the office tomorrow.
Yeah, so actually, so I'm referring, this, this is Caleb saying to call the office tomorrow, uh, but he nodded in the affirmative that they can do that as long as you have an agreement sign that says you can review and remove the sign if there was an appeal.
Great, again, I love coming in front of this Board, I think I'm coming too often, but you guys are great.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Business is great.
Okay, so our 605 and our 610 is taken care of. Um, now we have the, uh, business of going back to the 6 o'clock PM. So again, this was a hearing that I know you all, you folks attended for, that, uh, for the 6 o'clock PM applicant. Uh, again, FASA Management Incorporated requesting a special permit under Section 3222 and 4351 of the Auburn zoning bylaw to build 12 townhouses on property located at 262 Central Street, Auburn, Mass., map 56, parcel 82. And I'm going to do a last call for this evening, is the applicant present? Okay, so just for the record, we have no applicant in the room, in my view, that I can see, that has identified themselves, and we do not have anyone on the call-in screens that have identified themselves. So again, one more time, is the applicant for the 6 o'clock PM hearing present? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Um, for the folks that are here and wanted to speak, I do apologize for the applicant not coming forward this evening. Um, we are required to continue this hearing. Um, we can make a decision in the future if the applicant does not show up. Um, I cannot speculate as to why they may have not attended, but in the past, I can speak of different hearings where they may withdraw based on the, your interest, and they may submit a different set of plans, because if the Board votes on something like this and denies, they have a very long prolonged period of time before they can apply again. So there are some times when applicants sort of, uh, check the pulse, if you will, of the Butters, and then they just don't come in, because then they can submit a different package. So I would suggest that you all pay attention to the upcoming meetings. Um, you'll also automatically be notified as a Butters as well, but I know some of you are here to speak and may not be a Butters, so you may not be directly notified by mail, so you might be required to actually call the Town Hall. Um, I don't suggest calling any of the Butters to get letters, I really do suggest reaching out to the Department of Inspeccional Services to make sure you're getting the accurate information. I'm not saying that anybody would deliberately provide inaccurate information, but what I am saying is, you want to make sure you're getting it correctly. So I would suggest reaching out to the Town Hall. So, yep, so now I have to do a motion to continue to the 11:18:21, 6:00 PM hearing. Do I have a motion to?
Excuse me, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I make a comment?
So, if it's directly related to the application itself, I can't allow you to comment. If it is unrelated to the applicant and the process, I can.
I just want to make a, you can tell me if it's all right.
No, that's okay. So let's put it this way, you can ask the question, but we not, we may not be able to answer, but I still need you to come up here and speak into at least relative proximity of the microphone, so the folks at home can hear you.
So my name's Deirdre Donio, I'm at the Southern Princess Ave.
So we're really, we can hear you, but with that blue light right there, what looks like a mouse, that's where the people at home can hear you.
Okay.
So I can hear you well, so go ahead.
So I want to do is, was make a note for the record that this, and if we should continue and go forward in these proceedings, this applicant has not been, um, coordinated in any way, is unprepared at every meeting that we've been, and now he's missed a meeting. So, I, you know, I, it makes me question in the future if this were to go on, what kind of quality work would these people do, and what kind of partner would they be for the town in Auburn? And that's all I wanted to mention for the record.
Okay, thank you. So again, I think relative to that, uh, your comments are duly noted, but I would caution the Board that we cannot comment on that, so thank you. So one of the things you have to understand, folks, and I want to be clear about this as well, is whatever application comes forward regarding this project, whether it's the same one that is presented in a future meeting, or if it's different, what I suggest you do is look at the application, so specifically, this application falls under Section 3.2.2.2 and Section 4.3.5.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws. So, we can only make decisions based on those concerns, and we also can take into consideration of Butters' concerns and residents' concerns as well, but we are really tied to those particular, um, zoning board laws, right? Those are what we really have to decide on. So, when you do get a Butters' notice, or if somebody notifies you that this person is coming forward at the next meeting, please go into on armbanguide.com or the Town Hall, look up these two particular, uh, or the particular zoning bylaws the person is applying with, and try to focus your concerns and questions with them. Um, it, it doesn't really help if we have concerns that are expressed, which we will certainly take and be glad to hear, but we can't take any concerns outside of the realm of those bylaws that don't really apply to this particular situation. So it's very helpful if you do some homework and come prepared with your statements, is all I'm suggesting. So, I do apologize that we weren't able to come to a conclusion with this this evening, um, no fault of ourselves or the Board. However, again, you'll be notified, and we're going to find out about this 11:18 meeting right now. So, all of my instructions that I wanted to give to the folks at home have been presented, so do I have a motion to continue to the 11:18:21, 6 o'clock PM meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue as stated for the applicant earlier in your comments. in your comments.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, so again, roll call vote, Mr. Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Thank you, Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Thank you, Mr. Cussy?
Approve.
Ms. Roach?
I approve.
Thank you very much, and I approve, okay, folks, so the, technically, what happens now, so you're aware also, this meeting is continued, it's not suspended, delayed, or anything else, which means you have the opportunity to submit public comments to the Department of Inspektional Services via email, uh, phone call, or coming up and introducing yourself at one of the windows, so the meeting is technically open for further comment, and will be continued on 11:18:21 at six o'clock PM, provided the applicant res submits or requests this continuation, so I just wanted you to be aware of that, right, Caleb, so we covered all these things, I just wanna make sure.
That's correct, the hearing will be continued unless we receive a, a request to withdraw.
Right, okay, so every, I think, I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page, so again, 11:18, that's when we're gonna be here for that, um, you're more than welcome to voice your concerns to the Department of Inspektional Services, but at this time, we're not gonna have any further comment or concerns or discussion regarding this particular hearing, so if you'd like to exit before we wrap the meeting up, please feel free to do so, and thank you for attending.
Is that something on your cable?
Uh, yes, so, um, folks, before you leave, one of the people had a question about whether or not this will be on the local cable station, so it's ACT TV, they do it there, um, I do believe that they still post it on YouTube, um, and they sometimes post a link on their Facebook page, so you can go directly to it if you happen to have that, um, so, but it will be posted to rebroadcast. All right, so, um, I think we're good. Okay, so we have other business to attend to, um, we have the minutes of the meeting from 9:16:21, um, do I have a motion to accept the minutes of 9:16:21 as submitted?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as stated.
Thank you very much, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Cussy, how do you vote?
Approve.
Uh, Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
I approve.
Thank you, and I vote to approve, so the minutes of the meeting for 9:16:21 are in the record and have been approved, uh, next meeting is November 18th, 2021, do I have a motion to, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Budo, do you have any comments or questions you would like to talk about before the board? I see you're standing there online and you're patiently monitoring, uh, information, I just wanna make sure you're all set.
I'm good.
And I also, while I'm at it, I wanna thank you very much for doing a very good job, I appreciate you keeping us abreast of what's going on with the town hall activities, and when we respond, you respond very promptly, so I do appreciate that, so, thank you very much.
Not a problem, it's my pleasure.
Okay, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Before we do, Mr. Chairman, at the risk of keeping us just another moment-
That's okay.
Um, I believe in some of your comments, uh, and just for the record, I believe that